You ready? Okay, we'll start off with council meeting follow-up. Mr. City Manager or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that I have anything to contribute in this particular part of the agenda.
Okay. Anybody else have anything from last week? Okay. So we'll go to downtown Casper one-way to two-way conversion study. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. We have the opportunity tonight to hear the results, if you will, of the study and at the very least, a status report as to where we're at. You'll recall that this request is one that generated in the MPO organization and, you know, was really done at the request, if you will, of business owners in the area and concerned citizens for this issue. Accordingly, a part of this process included visiting with members of the public and trying to get public feedback and input on this matter as well. And so, I like you, am very interested in hearing what it is that, you know, has come of all this insight and input. And we have the opportunity to either, you know, have staff move forward with the recommendations or do more homework or whatever. So that is completely up to you and we certainly invite your questions as well as you take in this data. And so with that, if I could turn the time over to the MPO and their consultants, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Yates.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for letting me come and speak to you guys really quickly. I'll try to be brief. I know we all want to drive home in the snow. So first, I just wanted to do like a quick, like 30-second just run by of, since some of you guys might not remember exactly how the MPO functions. The MPO is like almost like a branch of the federal government that resides in the city of Casper. We get planning funds from the FTA, which are matched by the member jurisdictions of the MPO, MPA, MB, oh my gosh, MPO, thank you, Carter, Mills, Barna and Evansville, Casper and Natrona County to facilitate like region-wide transportation planning. We generate like a visioning document every like five to seven years called a long-range transportation plan. This study was identified as a near-term project in that plan to study the effects of turning the one-way couplets in downtown to two-way streets. Those had been converted as best as we could tell in the late 1970s as part of like broader nationwide trends in downtown planning. Essentially, it seemed like planners at the time assumed that there would be a lot of office traffic in and out of that portion of downtown because of oil offices. So they converted the couplets, the streets to one-way streets to sort of like move people in and out faster. Then the busts happened in the 80s and then those oil offices never really conglomerated downtown. So ever since the early 90s, this question about like how are those streets functioning? What are those, those one-way streets? How are those streets impacting downtown businesses has sort of been this like planning question. We found it all the way back in a study of 1991, as far back as 1991, saying like maybe the city should look at converting these back to two-way streets. It comes up again and again in our literature, which we reviewed before we came forward with the plan. So it shows up in 99, 2000, 2009, over and over and over, and finally again in the 2020 update of the LRTP. In May, we went out to work with Mead and Hunt to do a study of the area. We held like public outreach meetings with local business owners, stakeholders. My staff and I walked the streets telling people about those. Everybody commented that they're almost two-way streets already. There was not a business owner that didn't say that weekly they didn't see traffic flowing the wrong way on the streets, which is interesting. So that's about it. I'd just like to remind you that the city of Casper, since you guys housed the MPO, you have two voting members on our policy board, Councilmember Pollock and Mr. Napier. So are currently our voting members. So we do like planning goals and doc plans every year. This was on our last year's plan. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our consultant, Paul Silverman, with Mead and Hunt to go over sort of what we did and the recommendations of the plan and then we should have plenty of time for questions.
Okay, Mr. Silverman.
Thank you, Jeremy. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to present our study to you tonight and we look forward to your comments and discussion. I got about 10, 10 to 12 minutes of slides and then we're happy to take any questions and get into discussion. So the project purpose was, as Jeremy mentioned, to create a more balanced transportation network in the central business district in downtown Casper and respond to community requests. Like Jeremy said, this has been a long, relatively longstanding recommendation in numerous plans throughout the city. If you have time to read the report, there's a whole case study literature review in the appendix that basically talks about the positive impacts of similar communities that have converted back to two-way street patterns, you know, less crime, less crashes, more property values, higher property values and higher retail sales. So we, you know, we presented that at one of our early meetings. We considered several design elements in laying out the conversion of the streets to two-way. We really approached this from a complete streets mentality and that included potentially medians, center turn, center, two-way turn lanes or left turn lanes at intersections, reconfiguring the parking from angled to parallel to create more space for other users of the streets, bike lanes and potential traffic control modifications, either from the flashing stops to traditional stops or from the stops to two full signals. Just a quick rundown of what's out there today. The Durbin Street width from curb face to curb face is approximately 56 feet and that includes three northbound travel lanes, two parallel curbside parking lanes. There's no currently any bicycle lanes or medians. For Walcott Street, it's also 56 feet from curb face to curb face. Similarly, between two and three southbound travel lanes and one side has parallel parking, the other side has angled parking, no bicycle facilities. So that's again, just to refresh on what's out there today. You know, working as a project team with Mr. Beamer and Jeremy, we came up with really a large number of alternatives, designs for each roadway from just, you know, a two-way, you know, one travel lane in each direction with the median, then we had two-way with a buffer, what we call a buffered bike lane, which is just, you know, a little sort of horizontal space between the vehicle lane and the bike lane. Then we had a two-way conversion that would allow a center turn lane, you know, with left turn lanes at the intersection. Then we looked at a couple of options that would create what we would call sort of best practices in more urban bicycle lane design and that would, a protected bike lane that would have a vertical barrier, possibly a rubber or concrete curb between the vehicle lane and the bike lanes. And then what we call a cycle track, which would actually have, again, a protection, a vertical protection between the bicycle facility with two directions of bicycle travel on one street. And then we looked at a two-way option that had a center turn lane and just a one-way bike lane because, you know, if you put a bike lane in only one way, it takes up a little less space than having a bike lane on each side. And then we looked at options that number seven and eight that kept the angled parking and either provided a one-way bike lane or did not. I will definitely acknowledge, we heard from stakeholders and the public loud and clear that, you know, parking availability and one-street parking supply is a high concern. I don't necessarily agree with that, but it's a concern. So we respected that and kept one of those alternatives in the mix. So in terms of how we looked at screening the alternatives to get it down to really two options that we ran through our traffic models and laid out conceptually in a roadway plan, we looked at the construction cost, the business access, the impacts to, you know, loading and alley access, the pedestrian access and how easier or harder it would be to cross the streets, comfort for bicyclists, you know, if they were riding close to cars or not close to cars, and which side of the parking lane they were on, impact to parking, obviously the number of spaces that were, I don't use the word removed, because I believe that any, even in converting angled to parallel parking, there are places very nearby that that could be replaced. So I say displaced parking, not eliminated parking. Then traffic safety, just looking at speeds and conflict points, impact to transit. There is a transit hub nearby and at least one bus route on these, on the segments that we're evaluating. And then, of course, traffic operations, you know, how smoothly does traffic flow and delay and level the service? So we had a number of factors and it's probably a little bit difficult to see on the screen, but basically we evaluated them all quantitatively, qualitatively and sort of settled on alternative three, which is the two-way traffic flow with a center turn lane but without any bicycle facilities. And then either alternative six or seven, depending on if you were Durbin Street or Walcott Street, keeping the angled parking, but that was a center turn lane plus a bike lane in one direction only. So those were the two that we advanced and looked at more detail in our traffic models, cost estimates, construction cost estimates and conceptual roadway design. So a little closer look at what those alternatives entailed. So the alternative three on Durbin Street would look like this. It would basically take one of the three existing car lanes, moving car lanes and make it a center turn lane that would become a left turn lane at each intersection with no changes to the curbside parking, no accommodation of bicycle facilities. And then alternative six would make the lanes a little bit narrow, narrower, the one lane in each direction, the two-way center turn lane and allow for a little bit of a one-way bike lane there. So it would bring continuity in the bike lane south of Second Street that exists today and allow them to come all the way up through the business district. And then on Walcott Street, alternative three, of course, looks similar. We're converting the angled parking to parallel and I'll tell you how many spaces that impacts. And then on alternative seven, we'd be keeping the angled parking. We'd put the traffic in two directions and we would put a one-way bike lane.
...happened in the eighties and then those oil offices never really conglomerated downtown. So, ever since the early nineties, this question about like, how are those streets functioning? What are those, those one-way streets? How are those streets impacting downtown businesses has sort of been this like, planning question. We found it all the way back in a study of nineteen ninety, as far back as nineteen ninety-one, saying like, maybe the city should look at converting these back to two-way streets. It comes up again and again in our literature, which we reviewed before we came forward with the plan. So, it shows up in ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand nine, over and over and over, and finally again in the twenty-twenty update of the LRTP. In May, we went out to work with Mead and Hunt to do a study of the area. We held like, public outreach meetings with local business owners, stakeholders. My staff and I walked the streets telling people about, about those. Everybody commented that they're almost two-way streets already. There was not a business owner that didn't say that weekly they didn't see traffic flowing the wrong way on the streets, which is interesting. So, that's, that's about it. I'd just like to remind you that the City of Casper, since you guys house the MPO, you have two voting members on our policy board. Miss, Councilmember Pollock and Mr. Napier, so are currently our voting members. So, we, we do like, planning goals and doc plans every year. This was on our last year's plan. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to our consultant, Paul Silverman with Mead and Hunt, to go over sort of what we did and the recommendations of the plan, and then we should have plenty of time for questions.
Okay, Mr. Silverman.
Thank you, Jeremy. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to present our study to you tonight, and we look forward to your comments and discussion. I got about ten, ten to twelve minutes of slides, and then we're happy to, to take any questions and get into discussion. So, the project purpose was, as Jeremy mentioned, to create a more balanced transportation network in the central business district in downtown Casper, and respond to community requests. Like Jeremy said, this has been a long, relatively longstanding recommendation and numerous plans throughout the city. If you have time to read the report, there's a whole case study literature review in the appendix that basically talks about the positive impacts of similar communities that have converted back to two-way street patterns, you know, less crime, less crashes, more property values, higher property values, and higher retail sales. So, we, you know, we presented that at one of our early meetings. We considered several design elements in, in laying out the conversion of the streets to two-way. We really approached this from a complete streets mentality, and that included potentially medians, center turn, center, two-way turn lanes or left-turn lanes at intersections, reconfiguring the parking from angled to parallel to create more space for other users of the streets, bike lanes, and potential traffic control modifications, either from the flashing stops to traditional stops, or from the stops to two full signals. Just a quick rundown of what's out there today. The Durbin Street width from curb face to curb face is approximately fifty-six feet, and that includes three northbound travel lanes, two parallel curbside parking lanes. There's no, currently any bicycle lanes or medians. For Walcott Street, it's also fifty-six feet from curb face to curb face. Similarly, between two and three, southbound travel lanes, and one side has parallel parking, the other side has angled parking, no bicycle facilities. So, that's again, just to refresh on what's out there today. You know, working as a project team with Mr. Beamer and Jeremy, we came up with really a large number of alternatives, designs for each, each roadway, from just, you know, a two-way, you know, one travel lane in each direction with the median, then we had two-way with a buffer, what we call a buffered bike lane, which is just, you know, a little sort of horizontal space between the vehicle lane and the bike lane. Then we had a two-way conversion that would allow a center turn lane, you know, with left-turn lanes at the intersection. Then we looked at a couple of options that would create what, what we would call sort of best practices in more urban bicycle lane design, and that would, a protected bike lane that would have a vertical barrier, possibly a rubber or concrete curb between the vehicle lane and the bike lanes, and then what we call a cycle track, which would actually have, again, a protection, a vertical protection between the bicycle facility with two, two directions of bicycle travel on one street. And then we looked at a two-way option that had a center turn lane and just a one-way bike lane, because, you know, if you put a bike lane in only one way, it takes up a little less space than having a bike lane on each side. And then we looked at options that, number seven and eight, that kept the angled parking and, and either provided a one-way bike lane or did not. I will definitely acknowledge, we heard from stakeholders and the public loud and clear that, you know, parking availability and, and one-street parking supply is a, is a high concern. I don't necessarily agree with that, but it's, it's a concern, so we respected that and kept one of those alternatives in the mix. So, in terms of how we looked at screening the alternatives to get it down to really two options that we ran through our traffic models and laid out conceptually in a roadway plan, we looked at the construction, construction cost, the business access, the impacts to, you know, loading and alley access, the pedestrian access, and how easier or harder it would be to cross the streets, comfort for bicyclists, you know, if they were riding close to cars or not close to cars, and which side of the parking lane they were on, impact to parking, obviously the number of spaces that were, I don't use the word removed, because I believe that any, even in converting angled to parallel parking, there are places very nearby that that could be replaced. So, I say displaced parking, not eliminated parking. Then traffic safety, just looking at speeds and, and conflict points. Impact to transit, there is a transit hub nearby and, and at least one bus route on these, on the segments that we're evaluating, and then, and then of course, traffic operations, you know, how smoothly does traffic flow and delay and level the service. So, we had a number of factors, and it's probably a little bit difficult to see on the screen, but, but basically, we evaluated them all quantitatively, qualitatively, and sort of settled on alternative three, which is the two-way traffic flow with a center turn lane, but without any bicycle facilities. And then either alternative six or seven, depending on if you were Durbin Street or Walcott Street, keeping the angled parking, but that was a center turn lane plus a bike lane in one direction only. So, those were the two that we advanced and looked at more detail in our traffic models, cost estimates, construction cost estimates, and conceptual roadway design. So, a little, a little closer look at what those alternatives entailed. So, the alternative three on Durbin Street would look like this. It would basically take one of the three existing car lanes, moving car lanes, and make it a center turn lane that would become a left-turn lane at each intersection with no changes to the curbside parking, no accommodation of bicycle facilities. And then alternative six would make the lanes a little bit narrow, a narrower, the one lane in each direction, the two-way center turn lane, and, and allow for a little bit of a, of a one-way bike lane there. So, it would bring continuity in, in the bike lane south of Second Street that exists today, and allow them to come all the way up through the business district. And then on Walcott Street, alternative three, of course, looks similar. We're converting the angled parking to parallel, and I'll tell you how many spaces that impacts. And then on alternative seven, we'd be keeping the angled parking. We'd put the traffic in two directions, and we would put a one-way bike lane, potentially against the curb, because it is a little bit narrower, and bump the parking out. So, that's, that's conceptually how we reconfigured the street for the alternatives that were advanced in the study. This is just kind of a snapshot from our traffic model, where we ran, ran the capacity analysis and simulations, and, you know, I think this is a good illustration of, you know, how we would have this two-way center turn lane in the, in the middle of the block, and then it would open up into a dedicated left-turn lane approaching each intersection. So, there, there wouldn't be any changes to traffic patterns on first or second, any of the cross streets, the traffic controls would remain the same, but, but again, here we'd, we'd be running a, with dedicated left-turn lanes and a, and a, and a center turn lane for the mid-block driveways and alleys. We did, we did run this through our capacity analysis using the standard tools that you would use in a, in a traffic study, industry standard level of service grades, and under two-way operations, this graphic illustrates the overall average delay for each intersection. It still was, was very good, A, B, or C at every intersection. There were some approaches on Durbin and Walcott that would see increased delay, and those individual movements, not the overall intersection, those individual movements, particularly in the PM, evening rush hour, would, would be a level of service D. I want to make a point of clarification that we really did not retime the traffic lights under this scenario, because the way that the downtown grid is timed, we, we really, it's a larger impact. We didn't just want to take time away or green waves away from first or second, you know, it's a little bit of a larger impact. So, we're very confident that if the downtown grid was retimed to balance out a little bit more, everything could be a C or better. Delays would be very similar to today, if not, if not a little bit better. This is probably hard to see. It is in the report at a much larger size, but this is just looking at some of the signing and marking and signal changes that would occur to implement the alternative three cross-section. You know, where the new, this is the new parallel parking here on Walcott Street. You know, obviously, the traffic signals would need new poles and arms and indications to face the direction of traffic that doesn't exist today, so that, that is a big part of the cost of doing this. But that's, that's kind of what the, the lane assignments and, and marking might look like. And then in alternative seven, you can see here, we're not touching the angled parking on Walcott Street, and we do have the bike lane on the east curb, or east curb or curb lane in, in, in both, both streets here. So, those were the two concepts. So, of course, cost, you know, we, we certainly hope that council consider this on its own merit, and, you know, maybe, maybe funding options could, could be addressed, you know, as the project advances through design, but, you know, the costs are real, we certainly understand that. It's been an obstacle to moving it forward in previous recommendations and studies, as I understand. So, what, what we're looking at is if you're implementing this on a block that does not have a traffic signal, so you're really just dealing with street signs and street markings, it's fifty thousand dollars per block. If you're doing a traffic signal modification, meaning that you're not rebuilding the whole traffic signal, that it's in a state of good repair, but you're just putting in new poles, foundations, arms, signal displays, wiring, et cetera, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per block. So, again, that would include new signage, modification of traffic signals, new marking, and what I would call minor streetscape, ADA ramps, curb ramps, making sure that those are up to code. If you're going to do a full reconstruction of the signal, or for whatever reason why that says it's time to fully replace it, it would obviously be more expensive, full repaving. If you wanted to add more streetscape elements, lighting, that's not included in here, we, you know, didn't assume that that was a, a design need at this stage. So, if you wanted to do all seven blocks on both streets, we're looking at three-quarters of a million dollars. So, we know that that is expensive, and I'll circle back to some staging and phasing options. But a lot of people asked about the impact on spaces. So, the displaced parking totals, if, if you chose the alternatives that, especially on Walcott, that displayed, that converted the angle to parallel, you're talking a loss of only twenty-five to thirty spaces. And I, I recognize those are very important to the business or property owner right in front of those, but at a corridor level, that's not a lot. And the utilization of those spaces, they certainly weren't full all day, and they're side streets, we could look at replacing them ones. So, we, we are confident that that's a good trade-off, but we understand that this is a public process and a political process, so we, we just wanted to document it. And so then, our, our recommendations in, including this study are basically to go ahead with the conversion. We do not feel the traffic operations impact are adverse at all. It was favorably perceived by most stakeholders that we had a meeting with in July, except for the parking issue. It does meet the community planning goals, the longstanding planning goals that Jeremy mentioned, and it, and it provides those dedicated bicycle lanes. So, the next steps would be to select a final alternative between the two that have been retained, continue the engineering design and public outreach, really one-on-one with property owners to address their unique concerns, whether it's loading zones up by the kitchen store, or the storage units, displaced parking, incorporate pedestrian safety treatments. I think if you're going to go out there, go a little bigger with the design and, and do things to make it even more comfortable for pedestrians. I've got a picture on the top right that just sort of, sort of shows what we call a quick build or tactical curb extension, could be something you try seasonally to narrow the pedestrian crossing distance. And then, last but not leastly, phase the project to reduce costs. You don't have to do both streets and all seven blocks at the same time. You could do the blocks without signals on the northern end, you could do one street without another, and then, and then seek grant funding. There's, you know, I'm sure you've heard, tons of federal dollars coming for transportation investments, and a place like downtown Casper and sort of a livability improvement like this would, would be a great candidate, in, in my opinion, for those types of, of funds for design and, and construction. So, I'll, I'll stop there. Appreciate your time, and happy to take any questions or comments.
Councilman Nell.
Mr. Silverman, we're currently on Second Street. We are at a twenty mile an hour, that's our speed limit. So, if we were to change just the downtown area to twenty miles an hour, we would more than likely be able to do without the bike lane and stick to alternative three, is that not true?
I mean, at twenty miles an hour, tho, those speeds are, are definitely more comfortable for bicyclists than twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. I mean, we probably would want to look at some signage or lane width to make sure that, you know, it's, it's as comfortable as it can be for bicycles. You know, I, we did not get a, a chance to meet with bicycle-friendly Casper, you know, but, but it, if you wanted to do that, you know, and then, and then monitor it and consider, you know, possibly upgrading to other bicycle lane arrangements down the road, yeah, you could definitely, the speed, the lower the speed, the better for bikes, is your short answer.
As a follow-up, I guess, we've just approved electric scooters in our downtown area as well, and so, it, it just doesn't seem feasible or even prudent to put one bike lane on one side. Then you're going to have bicycles going against traffic if they're utilizing it on that street. So, to me, it seems like we either have to have two, or we do none.
So, the, the goal, the goal would be, I mean, it's great that you have all these modes and, and ways for people to get around. I mean, the, the goal would be to harmonize the speeds as best you can. So, you know, if the cars were going slower, you know, electric scooters can go about as fast as a bike, and so on and so forth, then you can probably run it, run it all in mixed traffic. You know, there's ways to sign it and market so that it, you know, it's, it's a more awareness of a shared, sort of a shared road. So, I, I view that as very positive, that, you know, the cars would go slower. I mean, the more, the more activity, the more that drivers expect to see other users of the street, then in other words, they're not entitled to a wide lane all to themselves and to drive fast, like, the more awareness they have and expectation they have that there will be other users in the lane, the, actually, the slower they drive and the, you know, more aware they are and to expect, you know, conflict points and stuff. So, it is safer in that respect.
Councilman Cathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, one of them, Councilman Nell alluded to, and that was the bike lanes. If we're having issues now with people being able to follow the one-way streets, I think a one-way bike lane is almost counterproductive to what the rest of your survey is stating. Secondly, you said there would be no traffic impact. Right now, basically, there are no left-turn lanes from Durbin all the way through to, actually, from Beach, all the way through to, you hit the stop sign, which there really isn't a left-turn lane, but you have stop signs when you get to David. And now, by going to two-way traffic, you're making left turns available in both directions at both Durbin and Walcott, which is going to do nothing but slow down traffic even more on Second Street. You're talking about eliminating twenty to thirty parking places downtown, and we are constantly bombarded by citizens not wanting to use our parking garage. So, I guess I've really got some major issues with, with converting all of this and eliminating the parking places. It's just my thoughts on those. Comments?
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that the, the one-lane parking, like, only the, the one, the parking lane only on one corridor was in an effort to not lose any, or not displace any parking spaces. And, and I mean, the MPO's position is that, like, we need to keep addressing transportation holistically and increase modes against, for all users on the system, not just cars. So, if we, if we slow down traffic in two directions and we provide more facility for, for bikes and pedestrians, we're going to, like, see more bikes and pedestrians on the network. That's what, I feel like the word comfort is not, it's not like we're talking about driving around in barcaloungers. It's, it's about, like, people feeling safe using the facility. And that's, and that's our position. But these are, the recommendations of the plan aren't, aren't like a final design, it's, it's just, these are the alternatives provided you, the City of Casper wants to move forward with recommendations in the report.
Yeah, I, I would just add, you know, that I, I totally get the, the concerns about congestion and, and parking, you know. I would say our experience is that if you went to two-way, but you didn't provide those dedicated left-turn lanes, you would definitely have traffic congestion. But by providing those left-turn lanes on Durbin and Walcott, the through lanes will flow smoother, especially through the signals. And, you know, this came up in, in, in our, in our community meeting, and it definitely came up as a project team between, you know, Jeremy and, and his staff, and that, you know, right now, the own-street parking is free, and the garage costs money. So, you know, there, there is a way to price your parking assets to balance them out a little bit more. You know, that, that's what other, other cities are doing that are, you know, trying to, you know, trying to manage the curb, the curb face a little bit better, you know, and change that perception.
Well, as a follow-up, you are correct, you're providing left-turn lanes north-south, which basically, we have left-turn lanes north-south. You're doing nothing to help the left turn, and basically, the extra left turns that you're creating east-west, and there are no, there is no room to put in left-turn lanes at Durbin or Walcott east-west on Second Street. That was where I was talking about, that's number one. Secondly, Casper is a community that likes to drive and park in front of their businesses. I see people that will drive a block and re-park rather than walking. Where I came from, I watched this type of a thing happen back in the seventies, and it destroyed that, that shopping in that area, because people weren't able to continue to drive. They were forced to go to that parking garage. They were forced to park behind huge parking lots that were free, behind the businesses, and they weren't willing to walk. And that's something that I see here, that I think needs to be taken into account when we talk about our businesses and what it's going to do to our downtown businesses. I know I hear from this survey that all of our downtown businesses want two-way traffic on those two streets, but I really don't see where it's helping anything. I'm, I'm sorry, but that's kind of where I am.
No, we, we, we welcome the input. We do have an alternative that does not change any of the existing parking. And I would say to the, to the east-west street, left turns, although we can't provide additional lanes on Second Street, we could look at signal phasing to provide a, you know, a left-turn arrow at certain times, different directions, or, there, there would be a way to handle that. Our models did not show that delay, but, you know, that's, that's not to say it wouldn't increase, so, that can, that can be handled in the, in the design phase and the signal operations.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you. You indicated in the presentation that other communities similarly situated to ours who have made this change have enjoyed increased business prosperity in the areas that they have made that change. Do you have a way to quantify that, any particular case studies, or, you said there's an increase or a benefit, but not really to, to what degree? So, I'm wondering if we have any additional information on that.
Yeah, I don't know if you can still see my screen, but I can get to that appendix.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the report's two-hundred-and-fifty-six feet.
Yeah, so, in appendix, appendix D, we did pull some statistics out of, so, this is Louisville, Kentucky. You know, we had a little bit higher ADTs, this was done in two thousand and eleven. What they reported is a twenty-three percent drop in crime in this neighborhood, thirty-six reduction in collisions on one street, sixty percent, and the other street, a thirty-nine percent increase in property values. You know, there, there are other case studies out there. This is Vine Street in Cincinnati. It was converted to one-way in seventy-five, back to two-way ninety-nine. The traffic volumes actually decreased by twenty-eight percent. The crashes went down, speeds went down as well, eighteen to twelve. You know, we, we can continue to look for other economic indicators, but these are just, you know, some of the statistics we, we pulled out for, for our research. You know, we're happy to look for more if, if the council would like to see them.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Pollock took the words out of my mouth. It was the same question that I was going to ask about the increase to, and the benefit of city, this, of city businesses in the downtown area with some of the others that you guys had, had talked about. So, with that being said, I think there, there are quantitative numbers out there, probably just not what you just said, but other places that we could find that, that benefit with two-way streets just like this. And so, I think that that's, that's a good thing for us to look at. The second part of it is that I just wanted to comment on, and maybe be a little bit facetious, is that I, I think our community can learn to walk to businesses. I, I don't think that that's the worst thing in the world. I think we can learn to do those things. I think it's a possibility. I don't think we have to be known as the city that wants to park right in front of businesses. And while I might get a few smirks, especially from Mike's, Mike's step over here, I, I get that part of it, but I think it's also okay for us to learn to walk to our places that we want a business, and, and it's a thriving downtown. And so, I think that that's a possibility. Bigger than that, though, is I think that there are quantitative, just exactly what Councilmember Pollock said, that we can look at by utilizing this and seeing the positivity that affects other cities, our size, and other communities. So, I just wanted to mention that exactly what you had said, Councilmember.
Councilman Nell.
Well, right along your line, too, we, we have a...
Well, right along your line, too, we, we have a, what I would assume is a multimillion-dollar parking garage that has this stigma that nobody wants to use the damn thing. I don't understand it. I don't know that I ever will. But I say we put metered parking downtown if we can get this done and not make it so easy. And, and the reason I say that, I was in a, a business that I patroned last week. Second Street is currently closed right now because of construction. And one of the gals in the business said, I said, hey, how's this affecting you? She goes, well, personally, it's affecting me because I can't park outside in front of, now I have to walk. And I'm like, wait a minute, you're downtown. Why are you parking in front of your business if you want people to come? Why are you parking there? But it, it just caught me off guard. And I thought, you know, I wonder how many of them actually do that. But the bottom line is, we need to use a parking garage. And if you don't want to walk, grab a scooter and get to where you're going. You know, there's a million ways to do it. But I did write down some things. I'm in, I'm totally in favor of this, by the way. Let's get that out. But number one, we're going to have less accidents. We're going to decrease speed, which is proven. More traffic and more visibility on those side streets will be better for those businesses. And it is proven that two-way traffic brings more visibility and more people into the door of your business. It's also going to improve the value of all the people that own those buildings down there. Like Councilman Pacheco said, we need to change behavior, not just walking, but using the parking garage. It's there. We should be using it. And it's empty most of the time. When I go downtown to eat, we use that garage, and there might be three or four other cars in there, and the streets are just packed. So I think we got to change behavior. But I'm, I'm totally in favor of it. I like alternative three. I would like us to not have a bike lane. Like Mr. Cathy said, I think just having it one-way is going to create more problems than it's worth. And our, if we can lower the rest of the speed in the downtown area to match Center Street, bikes and scooters can cohabitate with cars really simply. So I think metered parking is, is a huge key. If they have to pay to use the garage, maybe that's why they're not using it. Now, if you got to pay wherever you're parking, and that money will help with improvements and, and everything we want to do downtown, whether it's building ADA ramps or putting up extra lights for the night. Anyway, thank you.
Councilwoman Quest.
Thank you. So I agree with almost everything that you just said, Councilman Nell. But I had a question about the bike lanes specifically. I couldn't remember in your report if there was a cost difference between having room for the one-way bike lane versus not including that lane. So that's one question. And then another question is also just if we are eliminating some, you know, car parking, is there any evidence that shows there's actually an uptick in, in bicyclists or cyclists choosing to then, you know, enter the area via bike? I mean, I have no evidence myself, but just anecdotally, you know, having lived in places when there is an option and it does feel safe to bike, a lot of people will choose that option because they don't want to have to worry about parking. So just those two questions. Thanks.
Yeah, great, great question. So, I mean, the, the answer is, for very simple types of bike lanes, just signing and marking, there's, there's really a nominal cost, I mean, to including them versus not including them. For, for, you know, the best-practice bike lanes that have vertical buffers, you know, maybe it'd be a curb or some other rubber curb, there's, there's definitely more of a cost to those. So there, there could be a slight cost differential. Your second question about, will, will the bike mode change? You know, if, if the trips are short and you add things like convenient and visible bike parking, you know, I, I definitely think so. And I, I want to, I want to also differentiate, you know, some of the economic indicators. And it was, our literature review really focused on the two-way conversions and, and impacts, you know, to different property values or safety and stuff. But there's a whole other body of research that just, just adding bike lanes in a, in a business district, you know, does also have an economic impact on, on, on retail sales and stuff. So we didn't document that, but there is some literature on, on that, too. So I'll, I'll stop there to answer your question.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you. I, I, I would like to make sure that I'm characterizing correctly. I was at some of the public comment periods. And I, I would suggest that the, the business owners that I spoke to or heard speak were not yet convinced by the concept of displaced parking. I'm not sure that it was, was clear where that would be if we were displacing parking and what the implications of that would be. So I think that that is still a concern. I, I do have a lot of heartburn if we end up going with a solution that doesn't have a bike lane. But I agree, one bike lane is only maybe partially beneficial and, and maybe, you know, a way that we can alleviate the, the angst over displaced parking and create a more bikable, more pedestrian-friendly area would be to lean on the things like the, the speed limit and, you know, the enhanced crosswalks and that sort of thing to, to come up with the best hybrid solution. Because I don't, I mean, the best solution is one that's not available to us, which would be to keep parking, to have both bike lanes and to have the two-way. And that's just, that's not possible. So, so, but I, I do think that as the council deliberates on this, I, I do want to make sure that we are characterizing accurately the significant concern about parking downtown and, and how we might, you know, either, either better have a conversation about what displaced parking looks like or, you know, favor an option that doesn't displace any.
So I think, I think we did recommend in the report to, during the design phase, to convene like a parking task force of, of property owners to really identify their concerns, address them, quantify them, talk about management strategies, whatever that may look like, displaced parking, loading zones, pricing, you know, whatever, whatever it, it may be to, to make sure they're heard.
Councilman Nell.
And just as a clarification, based on Councilman Quest's question to you, if we were to put a bike lane or two, but even one, that shrinks the size of the, the traffic lane for the cars, if I'm correct. And if, if that's true, which I think it is, we have semis that deliver down in those areas to restaurants and everything else. And that's really going to congest that down and, and create even more of a problem, don't you think?
So our lane, our lane widths that we were proposing under these alternatives were definitely still compatible with trucks. I mean, we had 14-foot travel lanes in the alternative that did not have a bike lane. And then the one that did, we had 11 feet. So, you know, they, they really should be sufficient for, for delivery trucks. But the, the lane widths we can, we can look at, you know, in the, in the final engineering design, if, if, you know, they need to be a little bit wider. I think we have some play.
Councilwoman Inge Britson.
I agree with just about everybody else. I think that probably just converting it to a two-way, but eliminating the bike lanes, that we're not eliminating parking spaces. I think that for the downtown merchants, it's very important to keep as many parking spaces as humanly possible, but then also just kind of just navigating those streets a little bit easier would be available to us. And then, I mean, we've got scooters running around and bicycles already. So it's, it's just an adjustment of just doing the, the two-way streets.
Councilman Cathy.
Basically, what I was interested in goes along the line with what Councilman Nell brought up, is that the people with the horse trailers, the, that type of stuff, you're talking about 102-inch-wide vehicle. Your lane at 11 foot's 132. That gives you 15 inches on each side. And that's going to scare the heck out of most people trying to drive downtown with a semi. And also, the semis trying to make the turns. Right now, even the short ones like the Ciscos and people like that have trouble making the turns downtown on and off of Second Street with our one-ways. And I'm really concerned about those turns and those truck drivers, the Pepsi, the other distributors, and the Ciscos and the like of those people. So I think that was a very good.
I'm going to make a real quick comment. So, you know, initially, my concern was losing parking spots, the diagonal itself, and the 25 to 30 that we're talking about losing. But in downtown notoriously, you have employees, business owners that park in front of their business, and it, it's happened. They've been given tickets, I don't know how many times, for parking there too long, but they still continue to do it. I agree with what Ray is saying, is that people do not like to walk in this town. But at the end of the day, I think the biggest thing we've forgotten, and we're supposed to go there tonight, but it'll be two weeks from now, the Goodstein lot, I don't know how many parking spots, maybe you can tell us how many that'll give us, Mr. City Manager, but that's, it's a brand-new parking lot over there and a parking garage. And when we talk about talking, or walking in this town, I get it, it's, it gets cold. There's snow outside right now. But we're not talking about Cincinnati, Ohio, or Denver, Colorado. You're walking like three blocks, four blocks at the most to go from one side to the other. So at the end of the day, there's other alternatives there. So I would be in favor of doing the bike lanes or going back to parallel parking, not diagonal parking, because we're not, at the end of the day, you're losing, you're displacing 25 to 30 parking spots, but they're going to, we have those spots in other areas of downtown. And if you park strategically, it's not that long of a walk. And the last question I would, or a question I would have for you, Jeremy, is downtown is 20 miles per hour, correct?
Yes.
Throughout the entire downtown?
Yes, that's my understanding, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Gamros.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with a lot of what's been said here. This is a very interesting topic to me. But I haven't done a lot of independent research, and so I'd consider myself very ignorant on the topic still. My question is more, I mean, it sounds like regardless of what alternative we went with, we're looking at a range of a couple hundred thousand to 750,000. And so my question is maybe two-part. What sort of direction is being asked from us tonight? And is there any, is there a financial component to it? And number two, if there is, where would that money be coming from? And how would we be stacking it up to the other needs that we have in our community? Thank you. That may be for the city manager, probably. Thank you.
Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very excited to hear what Jeremy would offer in that regard. But, no, that's, that's okay. I'm, I'm picking on, I'm picking on Jeremy. That's a, a very important question in all this. I, I have to confess that looking at that price tag made me swallow pretty hard. I was hoping it wouldn't be that high. Nonetheless, that doesn't mean that it's not an important thing to do. And certainly, council, you know, gets the opportunity to prioritize those kinds of projects and, and those dollars necessary to do it and everything else. You know, what I would recommend is that if indeed ultimately council decides that they do want to take that dive and, and make that capital aspect of our street network a priority, I would probably recommend that we, we wait until the capital portion of our budget preparation be the period of time that we talk about that in some detail. That way, you have, well, in a lot of detail, because you will have, you know, kind of a, a broader array of the pieces and parts that are needed to be discussed as well as you put together that agenda. And so while I, I don't relish the idea of putting off this topic until then because it ultimately comes down to the money and the ability to do it, I do think it would help to consider that project in the context of the other projects that you will need to consider as well. And as you recall, that'll be February, March, when we tackle the capital agenda proposed for fiscal year '23.
Mr. Yates.
I just wanted to tag on and say that, I mean, what, part of what the MPO does is we, we do the project planning and transportation planning, and then when we add those projects to our TIP, we're able to, the city jurisdictions are able to apply for TAP grant, you know, alternative funding sources if you don't want to pay for it out of capital, which is part of like why we are asking you to approve the plan. It's easier to get additional monies for approved plans than, like, money follows the plan, not planning follows the money. Which is why, like, after this step, we tend to, like, hand off for a final approval to the jurisdictions. And then, you know, I might silently, not so silently, call Andrew Beamer and advocate for it because I think that these projects are important. But that that, that, that's, that's a big part of just the planning processes. Okay, we've got this idea. We think it's a good idea. We've, the jurisdictions approved it. Now we can look for funding sources or put it on capital plans and things like that.
So, Mr. Yates or Mr. Carter, so if we approve moving forward on this tonight, we're not necessarily approving, moving forward as far as expending money or anything like that, we're just simply saying, go ahead and move forward, figure out what the cost is going to be on doing this project, and then come back to us so that we can have a discussion of where those funds are going to come from, correct?
Yeah, exactly. So we're just asking for that final approval of our, of our plan. And then the, the decision to go further with it is firmly on your shoulders.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess the question that I would have also, in conjunction with the, the statement you just made, Mr. Mayor, if indeed we, we give that, you know, that provisional thumbs up tonight, what are our next steps? It certainly sounds like we need to winnow down the alternatives that this group and, and your constituents would have interest in, and ultimately come back to the council with, with that list, I would assume, so that indeed council can give the ultimate blessing. And obviously, each are going to have their own cost implications as well, I'm sure. But beyond that, what other steps would we need to take in order to fully implement the plan and hopefully be eligible for federal dollars, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
You know, I think we'd then, the MPO, I'm looking over to Ms. Becker, but the MPO would probably hand this off to engineering, to, for them to move forward with design and final alternative selection. So, to the city's engineering, not, not ours. Since we can't, like, the MPO, we, all we can do is the planning step. So then it would go into design and then construction if it kept moving forward.
Mr. City Manager, I know it's normally in work sessions, we don't take any comment from the public, but I believe we can ask for that. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's kind of important beings that we have, well, Mr. Step's sitting here, and I don't know whether he wants to get up, or anybody that is a business owner downtown would like to get up and, and just give us their opinion if, if council's okay with that. I would like to hear from some of the business owners, their thoughts on some of these alternatives, if, if it's okay with everybody.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Walsh was sitting behind me. I, as you know, own Donnell's Candies, along with my son. We're on Second Street in the atrium plaza, so obviously at the corner of Walcott, which has been one-way since I was young. And we've been downtown for 26 years, almost 26 years. And it's been apparent almost from day one that many people are confused or totally ignore the one-way. It, it's entirely anecdotal. I'm amazed that there aren't crashes daily in front of us. I have a friend who, I visit down the street to, on Walcott, who has a business. And every, almost every week, I'm in there. And at least twice in that half hour, we see a car going the wrong way in the traffic. And I'm, I'm trying not to exaggerate that. That's two a week. Plus, I see at least one going the wrong way on Midwest and then turning the wrong way onto Walcott. So when they finally figure out they're going the wrong way, then they turn the wrong way again to get out of there. So it, it's amazing. I see that every time when I'm crossing the street. And that's only two or three times a day that I leave my store to go across. So, and that's over 26 years. I've seen that numerous times per week, not per month, not per year, but numerous times per week. It's, it's, it exists. The other thing is that the one, one-way streets, to my estimation, really were designed to get traffic away from downtown. get traffic away from downtown, away from us that are open, trying to attract customers. And it does that in a number of unique ways besides the ones that are obvious, that you've got two lanes just going one way. But also we have islands in the way. One of the more affluent neighborhoods in town are the so-called tree streets, up Durbin and Walcott Beach. When you come down Walcott, you have a choice. You can go right and get out of downtown, or you can go left and out of downtown. Otherwise, you have to drive around a couple of times around blocks. Same thing with Durbin, you can't even, you know, you're coming downtown and you're by the library, and where do you go? Back on to First Street and around to Walcott. So I think it does deteriorate from parking, parking downtown. I don't know if it interferes with the parking garage or not. There is an entrance off of Walcott that can't be used because it's a one-way street. Maybe if we converted it to two-way, there's a possibility, maybe with some minor redesign, to allow parking in the parking garage off of that, off of Walcott, more convenient. You can get in there, but it's only the monthly parking right there. So maybe, I also think that it will help divert some traffic that right now is just going straight down First Street. It's just easier, once you get onto a street, to just leave. Not that I'm saying we should make it difficult for them to leave, but we should make it not maybe an encouragement that says, you know, "We really don't want you here. We'll let you stay here, but we'd rather you leave." That's, if you look at the signage and look at from that point of view, if you're, particularly if you're from out of town, then to my mind, to my way of thinking, we're telling people to go away. So, you know, that's the biggest reasons, I think. And then I see my other business neighbors, Walcott Galleria, they're not as busy as I think they should be. And I think that's because of the one-way street and not having two-way traffic. The federal court impacts a lot of the parking there, and that's not going to go away just because we have two-way parking. So, you know, that's a caveat. But I've been in favor, I'm only speaking for myself and for our business. I don't know what the other business, a lot of the other business owners don't like the two-ways, or the one-way either, and would like to see the conversion, but I don't have a survey or anything, and I'm not going to speak for anybody else, that's just the way I see it. And I think I've been there long enough now to have an opinion based on some of the data. And I think it, what I have, you know, I don't have quantifiable numbers, but I see those things. I talk to people every day who don't like the parking garage. They also hate metered parking, by the way. And you'll get a lot of resistance from us over that idea, but that's opinion, not necessarily I just, I think it would be, even though it's a big bullet to swallow, and a little more than I had thought it would be, I still think it, you know, per acre downtown, we generate more property tax than any other commercial area. That's been proven by a couple of studies that the city and DDA have cooperated in. And the other thing is I think sales tax follows that. I think that per acre of land, we generate more in sales tax downtown, even though you've got the big box stores out on the edge that still generate sales tax. I think per acre, we generate more and we bring people in. Do people really come to Casper to say, "Oh, I want to see the mall"? So, you know, I think that, I probably spent enough of your time talking. If anybody has a question, feel free to ask.
Councilman Now.
I appreciate you coming forward, thank you. And as far as the metered parking go, that was just an idea I had to try to get people to start using the garage, because they have to pay to use it.
And we've had that discussion and argument before when I was on the DDA board. I think Mr. Walsh and I disagree on that point.
Sure. At what, at what point can we find out what federal money is available? And like if we give approval tonight, does that give, I don't even know who, I guess my first question is who would be the one looking for that, because apparently the MPO is not going to do it. So is that Andrew Beamer then, and his group, that'll start seeking out funding to find out what is available for us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would say that the MPO would be a partner in helping us understand those federal channels and so forth, given that that's their line of experience and everything else. So without a doubt, if council adopts this plan and we can demonstrate to the feds that their plan, that they funded, is something we want to try to embrace regardless of what alternative we accept, if council, you know, does that, I think we will have a shot at making us an argument for funds, particularly if there are facets of the alternatives that we can consider that might make it our case stronger for those federal dollars. And I'm not sure what those would be, but that would be part of the investigation that we would undertake, to try to position ourselves as competitively as possible for federal dollars that would help drive that out-of-pocket cost for us downward.
And if I could just add, I, like Mr. Step said, that's our biggest generator, that particular area. And if we can bring more people into that area and more visibility to those businesses, that's only helping us. We're going to meet resistance no matter what we do. You're going to have people for it, you're going to have people against it. We as a council just have to decide what is best for our city, what is best for our downtown, and this seems to be it for me. So, but that's just me, it's just an opinion.
Councilman Cathy.
As we go forward, I guess my question is, you know, we need, do we need to decide which alternative and what we want? And then we have to go to design and get our designs done before we can apply for federal money? Or do we apply for federal money based on a concept and then go to the design phase? So I'm trying to figure out again, where, when are we going to have to spend money and what are we going to be committing to from that standpoint if we give a thumbs up tonight?
Liz, I, we'd have to have them in the design phase, because right now we're probably about 10% design, and I imagine we'd need to be at 30% probably. But the approval is just approved by resolution, it's on your agenda for next week. So that's, approving the planning document is, like, that's the next step for that. But for applying for grants and things like that, we would have to go to at least, I imagine, 30% design.
Mr. Mayor, I would probably add, Councilman, to that scenario, the goal that I would want to propose would be, again, being ready at the absolute latest for your capital agenda discussion. You will have your alternative decided upon, we will have a much better feel with regard to revenue sources that we want to pursue or maybe already have. And all that analysis is going to include, you know, a discussion regarding alternatives and which alternative is going to position us most competitively for those dollars. So that'll all be under your belt by the time we get to the capital agenda program in February, March.
And as a follow-up then, what's that going to cost us out-of-pocket from city funds to get through those planning phases through consultants, or are we going to do that in-house?
Mr. Mayor, that's a good question. I would say that our costs are probably going to be fairly minimal, particularly if we have the opportunity to use this consultant and MPO dollars to help us through that alternative evaluation process. And I guess that's more of a question, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
You know, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, that's, I would have to look into more. MPO dollars are pretty rigorously only for the planning phase. I would have to investigate that further and probably get back with you, I would, if I give you wrong information.
Mr. Manager, if we did forward this, so could we have, if before any dollars were spent, could we have those amounts brought to us and where they would come from prior to doing that? And we could have this discussion again.
Possibly.
Councilman Gammros.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies if I'm struggling to follow this. So you said there would be a resolution at our regular meeting next week, and that's simply to approve moving forward with this study, to explore, we're not picking our alternative right now, we have months to do that. Thank you.
I mean, you could approve the plan and never move forward. I hate to mention that. But you, I, you could approve the, it's just like, it signifies to like, the, so the MPO Policy Board approves it first, and then the jurisdiction approves it, and then we can say like, "Look, we did this planning work, the jurisdictions like approved of the work we did, and now they're moving forward or not."
Councilwoman Quest.
Okay, I think maybe my questions actually could be saved for later then, because they're more connected to design, but I guess just one of them that I'm, or I guess maybe two things. I kind of assumed the bike lane would be a no-brainer, just because it seems like that's the direction communities are going. So I'm, I'm a little confused about the questions around the bike lane, and I don't know at what point it would make sense to request some information about the economic benefits of having that downtown based on the research Mr. Silverman says exists. So I'd be really curious to know more about that.
The MPO, I think we in-house could dig up some research on like the economic benefits of bike lanes. I think that's something we could firmly do in-house.
Yeah. Okay, awesome.
And again, that non-bike lane option was just, we added it later in the project to preserve all of the parking spaces.
Okay. And that does make sense, I understand that that's kind of the point of contention there. I guess the other recommendation that I would just like, or a suggestion I'd like to make is that I heard that there wasn't a meeting with Bike Friendly Casper, I think that would be great at some point to take into consideration their thoughts as we go forward in this process. So, and then I don't know also, just on the metered parking, again, I don't know if this is the right time to ask these questions, but just kind of the economic, you know, kind of the cost benefit analysis there, I don't know where that information is or if it exists.
That, that might be a full, a full-size study, but Liz is coming to my rescue.
Okay.
I'm just going to get out of it.
You've done fabulous. Couple of things, Council. MPO's done the plans, for instance, for the Midwest Avenue. And by doing the planning, that allowed us to get into the engineering and the design, and then we've been able to go out for the grants. And again, we're going out, hopefully for specific purpose tax. We did plans for the downtown bike lanes along Durbin Street, were able to get the design done, we were able to get financing done for that. And to go out after safety grants, we've gone after TAP grants, we've gone after bicycling programs that are out there that encourage cycling. So we will be doing all of that and bringing those proposals to you to finance these projects, as Mr. Napier said, during the capital stage of our budget. And so you'll see a lot more come the springtime for this. The last question, though, kind of dealing with downtown metered parking, we did a downtown parking plan in 2019, and that brought forward through the MPO, the suggestion for metered parking. We have that available, we are happy to get that back out to you as a new councilwoman to look at that one. But that did come forward to this body at the time, and metered parking was discussed. At the time, the council, the seated council, did not want to look at the metered parking. That again can be anything you all, if you want to bring that back up. So this has kind of re-brought up that entire topic with the downtown parking. And that went along with the downtown parking plan, and we also incorporated some of that into our updates to the parking structure. And it is also something that kind of propelled us to move forward with some of the results with that, with the Old Yellowstone District slash Goodstein Parking Lot dedication. So all of this started with MPO plans, and you're beginning to see how it sections its way about, and we see, we see the implementation, sometimes in pieces, and that's what I envision with this too. But there are the grant programs out there, and even if we were to go after a business council grant, we have to have design completed for that. And we've done that with stretches of West Yellowstone, as well as obviously with Midwest Avenue now. So that, but it all starts with the plan, and then we get the funding figured out. But you'll see more in the spring. So if you'd like that, we can easily, Councilwoman, get you the plan and get it out to all of you, again, on the downtown metered parking component.
I would like that as well.
Okay.
Thanks. I would like to just take a moment. Mr. Walsh, I don't know if you wanted to address this or not, but...
Well, I got a call this morning, so I put a few notes together, so I, yes, I would, if it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So I'm just going to hold this and kind of go by, for those of you that might not know me, Charles Walsh, my wife and I own the Walcott Galleria. We also own a mixed-use property across from David Street Station on the corner of Ash and West Yellowstone. So I think we have some perspective on the one-way versus the two-way street. We see much more robust activity at our Yellowstone and Ash Street property. And again, we can set and argue that David Street Station did that, but I would argue that we had more robust activity before. I've even put a $30,000 sign out on the front of my building, but again, when the city is kind enough to put a tree that blocks it from Second Street, I only get one shot for a visitor or someone coming by to see it, and that's one shot going south on Walcott. So again, I just, for those of you that don't know, our building is multi-use. We have a loft apartment, we have professional suites, we also have an event facility, and we have retailers. And I would be doing my retailers a disjustice if I wasn't here having this conversation with you. So there's just a few things that I'd like to go back on. I've been in, I've lived here for 16 years, I've owned that property for 13. I also chaired the Downtown Development Authority. We sanctioned a study when we were looking at the integration between Yellowstone and the downtown, all right? And as part of that study, we did a traffic study. And some of the things that that traffic analysis brought forward are some of the same things that we've heard today, some of the things that you've talked about. Two-way streets, so these are some of the things that we learned, and I'm going to repeat, if not for dramatic effect, all right, as, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Two-way streets create higher levels of economic activity, improve livability of downtown areas. For example, two-way streets are better for local businesses that depend heavily on pass-by traffic, especially in my case, when I have one shot to get them into the building where I've got 10 other retailers. Additionally, traffic signal timing on two-way street forces vehicles to stop. So I heard that there's a little concern about people stopping. We want that, all right? We need them to slow down and basically take time to, "Oh, there they are, I need to go in," because they, then they can't make that decision to turn into a parking space or go to the garage. So we need, as local businesses, that exposure. Two-way streets, we learned, are safer. They have more, because they have more conflicting maneuvers than one-way streets, they correlate with, one-way streets correlate with less driver attention, because I got a straight shot, I'm going, all right? One-way streets also allow higher traffic speeds since signal timing results in less frequent stops for vehicles. Pedestrians also prefer crossing two-way streets since drivers tend to travel more slowly on them and vehicular conflicts are more predictable. A one-way network may prevent drivers from approaching their destination, and this is one thing that Mike, I thought, was very articulate and spoke very well on, in, from a most logical direction. For example, if I'm coming down Walcott, and then all of a sudden I've got to make a right or left turn to get into the downtown, I may just decide to go on, all right? And I think that happens a lot. I do it myself, right? If I didn't have a property on there, I probably wouldn't be driving around to come in. This uncertainty can intimidate drivers, in some cases make them hesitant to return. So just some observations. If the city of Casper posted a traffic cam on Walcott Street between First and Second Street, and I can guarantee this, because I see it, just like Mike said, and I, my wife owns Vitas on Olive Oil, so we sat there and we're looking out at the street, and I can count on my hand, at least... at the street, and I can count on my hand, at least twice, three times a, a week, down that street, and then the beauty of it is, a lot of times they figure it out about halfway, and they just do a U-turn right in the middle of that one-way street. I don't know why you haven't had more accidents, but I'm telling you, it's a major safety concern. I, I believe, we're fortunate that we haven't had accidents. A healthier economic downtown could result in higher sales volumes, improving sales and property tax collection revenue for the state, county, and the city. I don't know what those amounts are, the 2012 study did a little bit of forecast and projections at the Downtown Development Authority, but I don't have access to that today. No one wishes to lose on-street parking, me included, but my reading of the study indicated one or more, and you've already talked about it, proposed options precludes minimal or no loss of street parking. We should take aim at those options, and I think those are the options that you're taking aim at anyway. I realize that change is uncomfortable for some, however, given the documented economic safety and livability benefits, I would challenge this council to push, push forward this long overdue project, this project, by the way, in 2012, this project was $450,000, so a lot of it is delay, inflation takes effect, all right? It's just part of, part of the process, time, delay, cost, money. I, I thank you for everything that you do for the city, and, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Councilman Gammros.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for taking the time and for your comments this evening. You referred to a 2012, I believe it was, DDA Commission study, if I heard right, you said you don't have access to that anymore, I have a DDA Board meeting tomorrow, is that something the current executive director?
For it, they should have a copy on.
Thank you. I'm a, I'm an information guy, so I'm looking forward to the one from Liz, and I will certainly seek this one out as well. Thank you.
I, I would like to add just a couple of comments. I, I came from a much larger city when I moved here from Ohio 16 years ago, but I, and, as you recall, I, I was the Downtown Development Authority's chair when we pushed for David Street Station, and we took the then-city council up to the city of Rapid City, all right, to evaluate their market square. I would, I would argue that that's one of the best investments we've made in the downtown, bringing David Street Station here, all right? They had the same challenge with parking, all right? And they, Rapid City, decided to put meter parking in, and the goal was, the closer you are to downtown, the higher the cost was. As you went out a block, the lower the cost was, went out another block, the lower it cost, and you got three blocks out, it was no charge, all right? There was a lot, a lot of argument, a lot of disputes about that, and a lot of people didn't care for it, but I'm telling you, it's working really effectively, so I would point again to Rapid City, not saying that we have to figure everything out here on our own, we can look outside, just like we did with David Street Station, and see how it has, how it has either benefited them, or, I'll use the opposite word, has challenged them to, to do that, but that's another good example, a, a reference for you to, to look at. Mike and I disagree, I think we should have meter parking.[817.04][817.04](Laughter). Yeah, any other questions for me?
I think we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Yates, if I could maybe ask one more question, have we had a discussion with the federal, federal courthouse? And the only reason I ask that is, right now you have one-way going southbound on Walcott, and so any traffic that goes down Walcott off of First Street is going to be moving traffic generally, and I know there's no parking in front of the federal courthouse, but if we change it back to a two, two-way, then you're going to have traffic that's going to be stopped at a light and potentially backed up in front of the courthouse. So, Mike can, the only concern I would have is, you know, they have put the, the non-parking in there for a reason, and so I'm just curious as to whether that creates an issue for security as far as the federal courthouse goes.
Mr. Mayor, we, I did reach out to the GSA representative that manages all the federal bill, uh, federal property in Casper, and I just forgot his name, but he was at our meeting and said that the conversion, their, their security apparatus will function on two ways and one ways. So, I, I, you're never, I would say you're never gonna get the parking in front of those buildings back, but that they were, they didn't see any long-term issues with their security, like apparatus and, and changing those streets.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cathy.
One thing I would like, not necessarily the people out here, but I would like council to think about is, there is a discussion of bike lanes versus not bike lanes, and I would like the people on council to think about, that if you were 45 and up, how far would you ride a bicycle with our hills and valleys to get to downtown to do shopping, to turn around and go back home, before we really get into this big discussion about bike lanes downtown? I realize they would be important for the few that live in the apartments, as your dad did, and, and as they're talking about the townhouses or the townhomes in the Nolan and things like that, but I really want council, as we continue our discussions, to think about Casper's demographics and our weather, and figure out how many people be, even closer than Beverly, but how many people east of Beverly and west of Poplar and north of about 12th are really gonna ride a bicycle to downtown? And the money and the time and the effort that we would be spending on bike lanes downtown, and I think that's a little bit of where potentially councilmen now might have been coming from. Just a thought, think about it, you know?
Well, the only thing I'd add to that is, if you build it, they will come. I mean, you've got trails that are built, and people use the trails all the time with bikes, so to say that, that, and I don't think it's really a demographic, I agree with the weather, that, that keeps people from using them, but in the times when the weather is good, I think you, if you have them, they'll probably be used. We've got scooters downtown now, I'm sure that, they'll, I think they'd be used, personally, that's my own thought. Anybody else? Okay, so, thumbs up to move forward tonight with the process, we're not, any money that says it'll be spent will come back to us at a later time, but this is just to get the ball rolling, to get an idea of money and, and the cost associated with and, and whatnot, correct? Okay. So, thumbs up to move it forward? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Casper's council for people with disabilities update, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council indicated an interest in receiving periodic updates from committees and, and groups that you, advisory groups that you appoint. We have that opportunity here this evening to hear from the, the council for people with disabilities. One of the things that, that I hope you'll take some satisfaction knowing is, the last time we had the opportunity to visit with this group, it was brought up, it, it, at least in part with regard to that visit, as it relates to, to bus stops and the issue with access for tran, you know, getting onto the transit system and so on. We, we indeed have put together a very interesting partnership with this group, as well as others, to try to tackle that issue, and we, we would like to bring that up in much more detail at a future meeting, in fact, I think it's the next work session, if I remember correctly. Don't hold me to that, but I, that's what I recall. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I knew I was right. Yeah. So, be aware of that, and again, I, I hope you can take some satisfaction knowing that we are trying to be responsive as a team, the council team and the staff team, to, to work with these councils and do good things based on the, the things that they see and experience. So, tonight you have another opportunity to visit with this group, and we look forward to hearing what input they have. Thank you.
Zulima.
Mayor, Council, thank you. So, we know that Casper's Council of People with Disabilities was formed in July of 2019, and I can say in that time they've been very productive and a very active group. So, our last update to the city council was in January of 2021, as City Manager Napier referenced, and, so we wanted to come back and review what the year's been like and, and what activities they've been up to since then, certainly many accomplishments. So, for that portion, I would like to turn it over to Nikki Green, she is the Vice Chair of Casper's Council of People with Disabilities. Unfortunately, I think the weather kept some other members who wanted to attend from being here, but Nikki can give you an update about the year, as well as some future initiatives that the group's working on.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Councilpeople, thank you for letting me be here tonight, it's my first time, so I'm sorry if I'm a little weird, but, anyway. So, we did, we had a really big year. We, the council decided to create a, to do our, for our first run Fraser, we did the Heroes of COVID 2021. It was a, a large-sized poster that had rip-off panels and collage of photos. Sales were 260 bucks, roughly, but part of the big problem was, we were really, really late in getting that calendar out. The fundraising team has chosen to continue with another calendar campaign this year, that we are focusing on service animals, and we should have those ready to go by the parade, is our hope. We meet next week and we'll be finalizing photos, but everything else is ready to go. We also did, in recognition of March Disability Awareness Month, we did an entire month of Music Unites Casper, where each week we focused on a different type of disability and how music can benefit and help people with disabilities, culminating in a, a Facebook Live concert, where we had about a dozen musicians and whatnot. It was a lot of fun and, in a COVID area, era to get, I think we tapped out at about 101 viewers during the course of the event, so we are planning on doing something else in March, but we're not sure what that's going to be yet. We have also, as was mentioned by Mr. Napier and by Zulima, that we are working with the Transit Department, looking at bus stops and some other alternative transportation, which it sounds like it's gonna be discussed next week, so I won't go too far into that. We've also been working a lot with Jeremy, with the MPO Committee, and providing insight into perspectives with, specifically for people with disabilities with wheelchair access and, you know, the, with the ride and assist and things like that, and some of the more unique features that really affect people with disabilities. Something in, as far as that lane is concerned, we are, we have been really working to expand those, looking at, and encouraging expansion of service hours, especially for special events like, you know, the upcoming Christmas Parade and some different things like that, to allow a larger section of the community to actually join into those things. Speaking of the parade, we did have a special section of a catty corner from the NIC where we, it was specifically geared for people with disabilities. It was a huge success, and we had a booth up and were able to communicate with people about the board and have the MPO studies available for people to review. I am looking forward to the meeting this week to work on the Christmas Parade, and actually working on getting some easier access for people in wheelchairs and walkers and whatnot to get right up in there. So, that's coming up. We finally, we got our website done, which we, Zulima worked tirelessly on, to get that up and running, so that people can have information and, and know what we're doing. Currently, we are recruiting new members. We have 11? Yeah, 11. Ideally, we would like three to five more. We have received some applications, and we'll, we will be reviewing those next week and presenting, presenting them to you all soon. I talked about the Christmas Parade, the calendar. We have been, as part of our, our committee and with the transportation stuff, again, and I, I have been working with Lyft and Uber to look at creating some rideshare opportunities, not only with medical facilities, but maybe some other non-medical transportation routes and availability and things like that, so that is on there. Something new that was just brought up last month was the hashtag #WeThe15 campaign, which is a global initiative for the 15%, of citizens around the world who are disabled in one way or another, and working to create more awareness for those with disabilities. So, we haven't spent a whole lot of time talking about it, but it's something that we could potentially be coming to you soon for proclamation or recognition, or, you know, something along with, like that. The last thing that we are gonna be working on is to increase awareness of snow removal and the impact that lack of snow removal has on people in wheelchairs and walkers and, you know, walking issues altogether. And we are, we're working on developing an "I Count on You" campaign, so look for that in the next couple of months as well, so.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Wasn't able to make last, last month's meeting, but I've been to the majority of the meetings, and I wanted, I'm not gonna really ask any questions, because I, maybe if the other council members have questions, but being the liaison, I'm just incredibly proud of this group for the work that they've done, and first I want to just also recognize Zulima as the staff member that helps with this, she's just fantastic and does an amazing job of staying on top of everything and does a great job, so I just wanted to recognize Zulima, the hard work that she's doing for, for this council. So, when we first created, I remember having that conversation about why we created this council, what it was about, and, and I think it's really easy for us, if we don't have disabilities, to really kind of not understand, and so we kind of put that underneath, you know, and it's out of sight, out of mind, and we don't, we don't understand it unless there's a member in our family that's, that has a disability, or we work in the disability field, those types of things, we don't have any really full concept of that. What this council has done and continues to do is bring that awareness and education within the community, to have that understanding that people with disabilities do struggle, and even the thought of, oh my gosh, my sidewalks, one of the reasons why we do that, because maybe my neighbor has a disability and can't get down the street, it's those types of things that this is what the council's doing, incredibly proud of the work that they do, incredibly proud to be a part of this as their liaison, and I am hoping everybody on this council and staff will buy that calendar when it comes out, I'll be on it, and so we'll making sure that that gets done, and we're gonna support this council as much as we can, so, anyway, fantastic job, you guys are doing great, keep it up, and I look forward to the meetings to come.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you very much for that update. I, I'm very excited to see the "I Count on You" campaign as sort of a follow-up to some of the early discussions that we had with this council. I know based on some of the findings from the Council for People with Disabilities, I changed my own personal snow removal and ice removal behavior, you know, from maybe just sort of doing the bare minimum, like one little swath of my sidewalk, to realizing that, in fact, you should be doing the whole sidewalk to accommodate for wheelchairs, walkers, other mobility devices. And I'm really excited to hear more conversation around that, because it's a, it's, I think, a, a switch that, that people will be very willing to make, it's just an awareness issue, I think, and so I'm really excited about that, and I would just like to encourage the city to find ways that we can, that we can help be a, a good mouthpiece for that campaign, because I do think it's really important, not only, you know, for folks with disabilities, but just for safety generally, and for, you know, all sorts of, I've, I've been taking my, my grandma around who's using a walker now, and even, even that, it's like, you don't, you don't know it if you're able to just, you know, walk in your boots over the snow, but trying to navigate with any sort of wheeled vehicle and strollers and other things as well, experience the same thing, so I'm really excited about that, and I hope that we will, now that the first snow has, has fallen, I hope that we will find ways to make sure we're amplifying that message, and also excited about the calendar. Yeah, I'll be looking forward to that, so thank you so much for the update, and, yeah, just encourage the city to, to find ways to use our channels to, to help push this message out as well.
Councilman Nell. You did awesome, by the way.
Thank you.
I know you were really nervous, but you did great. The "I Count on You" video and, and audio, is that gonna be on television and radio? Is that, is it going that far?
That is okay.
Is it? Excellent. I don't, I don't know how many people out there know it, but if you took the LBGTQ community and the Black Lives Matter community and put them all together, they still wouldn't equal up to the amount of people that have disabilities. So, it is amazing to me that that doesn't get as big a voice, I guess, as the others do, but anyway, congratulations and thanks for all your hard work, and I'm sure this council will be. council will be right behind you in, in helping you get done what you need done.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to night skiing fees. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of you are probably aware that we've been working on getting lights up on Hogedon, a couple runs at Hogedon for, for quite some time. Mr. Lutz, as a matter of fact, has been a huge proponent of that and has, has made that happen in a lot of ways with respect to the partnerships that were necessary to, to put all that together. We have not, however, by now, decided what those fees ought to be to access that service. We are starting out in year one this coming ski season, and we're starting out with a, you know, a fairly moderate schedule of Friday and Saturday nights to see how it goes and see what works and what doesn't work and so on, to, to consider potentially expanding that in the future. But, but we do need to discuss briefly what it is that we're recommending in terms of fees to, to participate. And so if I could, Mr. Mayor, defer to Ms. Lopez to walk us through that, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. Lopez.
Mayor, Council. So it seems fitting that we are talking about skiing rates on our first big snowfall of the season, and it's a timely topic and one that we're excited about because we are looking forward to the next ski season. So as City Manager Napier indicated, in 2019, we did accept the donation of lights from Hogedon Night Skiing Project so that we could provide night skiing to the community, and now that project is completed and we are ready to offer that this coming season. The plan, as indicated, is to offer night skiing Friday and Saturday from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on those dates. So tonight, we did want to talk to you about the proposed rates for night skiing in advance of formal approval at next week's council meeting. So staff and the donor researched night skiing prices in the region and then came up together with the proposed rates based on really kind of two key concepts. The first one being that we can really only offer two runs of night skiing because of the lighting that's available, and also we considered regional rates and how they compare. So the comparison work that was done is Attachment B in your packet, if you wanted more details about what is offered throughout the region, and then Attachment A in your packet is what you can see that we're proposing for the night rates for skiing. So as you can see in the packet, we are proposing daily night tickets as well as a separate season pass for night skiing that's going to be completely separate from the season passes and day tickets, which rates were approved earlier this year in the spring of 2021. So the primary reason for keeping those separate is because we are trying to make sure that we tracked, that we adequately track separately what the expenses are and the revenues associated with night skiing, because you may recall the MOU with our donor says that they will cover $60,000 a year, up to $60,000 a year in subsidy for the first three operating years of night skiing. So that's the primary reason for doing separate passes, and with that, I'm open to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Nell.
The subsidy that they're offering, what fees are incurred with extending the, I'm assuming labor, electricity, is that, am I correct?
Yeah, so it would be the labor associated with Lyft operation as well as our pro-patrolers being able to offer safety features throughout the evenings, and also, yes, of course, electricity for the lights.
So do you have any idea where that subsidy falls in with what actual expenditures are projected to be?
You know, it, it has been difficult to estimate what we think that will be, but we feel pretty confident that the $60,000 will definitely cover the subsidy.
Zulima, which, which runs, which two runs have the lights up there?
That is a good question.
The Boomerang and Park.
Okay.
How many runs are there?
Total runs?
Twenty-two.
Oh, wow.
So because it's such a small number of actual runs that will be usable at night, that's why the cost of the tickets is pretty low.
Councilman Gimmerson.
Thank you, Mayor, and apologies, maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention just a few moments ago. Ray was distracting me. It was in reference to the generous offer of the donor to cover $60,000 for the first three years. You said it more than covered the subsidy for the first three years. I guess I'm curious, after those first three years, I mean, it's awesome that we could offer night skiing, I hope people take advantage of it, and it's really successful, but we already subsidize Hogedon to the tune of $280,000, and so I'm curious, after those first three years, can we expect that subsidy to increase? You know, will that compound the issue we have with recovering costs at Hogedon now after the three years are up? Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I appreciate that question, and, you know, the, the concern as we got into this program was that we would do just that, that we would grow the subsidy required from the general fund by, you know, providing a service that wasn't taken advantage of, or costs or whatever reason were way more than we expected, and again, doesn't balance off with respect to people who, who want to ski at night. I would tell you that after the three years, if we find that the service is just not, you know, panning out and in fact is expanding the subsidy, we will likely come back to you and say, hey, we're, we're going to recommend turning off the lights and perhaps only using the service for things like ski teams that want to do that, or, or other, you know, real specialized type, type requests, and/or, you know, a few nights a season where people want to come up and do it as a, as sort of a special thing, you know. I, I don't know that that will be the case, I don't know that we'll ever have to bring forward those recommendations, but that was definitely the conversation when we, when we initially proposed this program expansion, if you will.
Councilman Cathy.
You mentioned the ski teams, and I may have overlooked it in here, but are they planning on using that on a Wednesday and Thursday basis as well, or how is that going to work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we, we do anticipate engaging a partnership that would service what needs that they have and interests that they have in, in using the, using the slope at night. We, we don't anticipate trying to cram their practices and so on, tournaments, whatever the case may be, into the public access nights of Thursday, I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday nights. So those partnerships are being put together now, and, and we do anticipate being able to help out, mostly because they will likely be willing to cover those costs in order to have that access.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering about, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So are you needing direction to move forward on approving of the rate fee?
Mr. Mayor, if you have a provisional thumbs up tonight, we will be bringing resolution for your formal approval pending your direction this evening.
Okay, are we good? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda review. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you will, turn with me to the, to the grid documents that we have provided you, and I need to find mine, give me just a second here. We typically like to give you just a heads up with respect to items that are coming up and future, what a future agenda looks like for us. As you can see, for next week, we don't necessarily have any, any pre-meeting topics that we need to, to take your time up previous to the regular business meeting of the 19th. However, there are a couple of things coming forward that you will probably want to be aware of. One of the biggest ones that council's been concerned about, at least in recent months and years, is with regard to the transfer of the liquor license number five held by cocktails being transferred to 307 Horse Racing. You entertained a work session item on this not too long ago, where you were told that, that that transfer would take place. Well, this is the item that makes that happen for you, and so that commitment that was made to you is coming to pass here soon, as in, within the next few weeks, you'll be establishing the date for that public hearing on, on Tuesday night. One of the other questions that council has had is with regard to the, uh, let's see, lost my spot here, the Film Commission. Council entertained a work session topic on that as well. By way of follow-up, we do anticipate the, the formal adoption of that idea taking place on the 19th as well. As you can see, a resolution will be brought forward for your consideration that evening, which effectively gives us the policy direction, if you will, to move forward in establishing that program in partnership with, with other agencies, i.e. the county, Visit Casper, and so on, in putting that together. You can also see here that we have the adoption of the study that we just went through being put forward for your consideration next Tuesday night, and beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have other items that I would bring up for your attention. Unless there are other questions, of course, we would be happy to entertain those about anything for next week's agenda.
Councilman Nell.
I do notice that you do have myself and Councilman Quest out for next week. Of course, that's depending on the hospital. They're starting to cancel surgeries because the hospital is currently full, so in the event that I can't have my surgery, I will be here, but I did notice on November 2nd, they have me as out as well, and I'm not sure why or where that came from, but.
Okay.
Excuse me? Am I not invited to that one?
We will make that correction, absolutely. Thank you.
That's probably Pete trying to get me out of here.
Anybody else? Okay. Move on to legislative review. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a report that we would like to make available to you this evening. As you know, the, the legislative agenda, I should say, activities for this next legislative season are very much underway. There's a lot of conversations that are taking place right now that you've been following and having questions about and, and so forth. What I thought we could do would be just to go over just a few of those things. This report right here is for your reference and to, you know, kind of ponder on, as you, as you have time to consume this information. As you can see, kind of in the center of the page, there's a number of things that are coming forward that are sort of functions of, of the discussions that have taken place probably since the summer, and so we're following those items pretty closely in that they do have some impact, and in some cases even positive impact, with regard to the way in which the City of Casper could certainly do business. And as we get closer to seeing those things come to fruition as a bill, we will likely need your direction as to your, your feelings of support or non-support, and so if you, if you would, kind of read through those and get familiar with that, we will be coming back to you likely if these things survive the process and move forward. Some of the other items, though, that we want to bring to your attention, that we have had a lot of direct follow-up and engagement in, is located toward the bottom and then on the back of your document here in bulletized fashion. Fire pension fund day legislation is something that we've talked about quite a bit and does indicate if passes as-is, and we know how that can go with bills and legislative ideas, we could anticipate end up being committed to about $300,000 a year to support the, the rescue of that fund and its continued status as a going concern moving forward. While I'm not excited about hampering operations with a $300,000, you know, charge every year from the state, I would tell you that that is quite a bit less than what could have been assessed to us as one of the biggest pool partners, if you will, in this fund, and so, you know, it's, it's good and bad news, as it were, but the reality is with the, with the program that's been proposed, it's, it certainly is a partnership of a number of entities, and at the end of the day, the, the fund will be rescued potentially, and the participants will be taken care of in that fund. Another item that I, I think you'll find some interest in, we, we've entertained a number of conversations at the work session level about missing persons and, and a missing persons database that has been absent in the state of Wyoming for a long, long time. We actually have the database being created right now through DCI, which is, in my opinion, a huge success, and kudos to the DCI for putting that together. Our police chief had a lot of conversation with that, with that team to, to, you know, bring this idea into motion, and we certainly have been visiting a lot with Representative Washington and others to, to help with this as well. While we don't know that this is done necessarily now, despite the good efforts of, you know, our state partners, the, the bill, we think still needs to move forward and be brought into fruition, and we think that that could potentially happen, so we're keeping an eye on that. The biased crime legislation that's had some conversation at your level as well has not come out of committee at this point. That's not to say that it won't necessarily have a life outside of committee, while that may be unlikely, we certainly will be keeping an eye out for that as well and see what, what we can bring back for conversation with all of you should something like that happen. Some of these other elements and ideas and potential draft legislative items are things that have various possibilities. As you can see here, Community Development Districts is not making it out of committee right now. The Lodging and Restaurant Association is, is potentially taking forward a bill for tourism improvement legislation. We'll see how that goes, and we'll certainly keep an eye on that as well. The last two items that you see on your bulletized list deals primarily with the conversation that has been put forward by some of our community partners here in Atrona County as it relates to some of the rub that municipalities are experiencing with special districts, and these bills will attempt to resolve some of that if they should pass, and so we'll see how that goes at the committee level and thereafter as well to, to bring back for your discussion potentially also. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that is my legislative report for this evening.
Okay. Anybody else on legislative? Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you. Mr. Napier, can you refresh my memory? I believe that, I think her name is Ms. Tanako, who has been working on the missing persons issues in this community. I feel like she was encouraging the city council to take some sort of action on this as well, and looking at the fact that maybe this has stalled out a little bit at the state level. Can you remind me what she was suggesting that perhaps we could do to help push that effort forward?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I, you know, we've had a number of conversations with that citizen of our community, and in fact, she has been very, very helpful with respect to carrying the conversation forward at the state level as well. You know, initially, when she came forward, she came forward as kind of a, a last-ditch effort, if you will, to get some traction with respect to this idea, and so she came to the council asking for help essentially, and council gave us the blessing as staff to reach out to her and try to get her plugged into legislative channels that maybe she wasn't gaining access to. I think at first, she, she probably did think that council could do something by way of a legislative action at the local level that would engender some movement in this, in this arena, and we did not agree that that was necessarily our jurisdiction and venue to make that happen. And we did not agree that that was necessarily our jurisdiction and venue to make that happen. So what we have done, though, is, like I said, opened up some legislative channels to her, had some meetings with her involved, and got WHAM engaged, and we think that, as well as DCI, I should say, and we think we're making actually great headway with this, and I think it's going to be successful.
So no action that we could probably take as a council at this time to help, other than just continue to stay the course that we've been pushing for at our level?
And as well as, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, we may need to rely upon some of your advocacy when this goes to the floor, because undoubtedly, particularly as it relates to some of the budgetary implications, this legislation will probably be discussed. Having folks like you to help us carry that message would be a request I could see us making to some of you.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to council around the table. Councilwoman Ingraham. Councilman Gamros.
I do, I'm sorry, I have more than usual, which I know is already enough, but I thought our information packet was really interesting this week, and so I wanted to share for anyone that hadn't had the opportunity to look at it. There was a letter from Martin Axland at True Land and Realty, and it was in response to Mr. Steenland's comments at our meeting last week, wondering about progress on the no-lawn development and what's going on over there in the area of David and Ash. He said Black Tooth Brewery will open late November or early December. They're looking for tenants for the southern portion of the building but experiencing supply chain shortages for things like roofing material, electrical equipment, and windows. But they have utilities stubbed into the site from the street and have completed some dirt work in preparation for townhomes. So if anybody else shared Mr. Steenland's concerns about the activity over there, I would suggest you look at the information packet this last week for an update on that. There was also a memo from Craig Collins, who is a city planner, in response to some of the concerns I had about traffic related to the Trails West Estates Number Six, that's over in the River West subdivision of Paradise Valley. It was really interesting. I would encourage you to read it if you're in, share my interest, but of note was the fact that a traffic study wasn't needed because it didn't meet the threshold of 75 vehicles per peak hour. That was a question I had. Also talks about how the River West subdivision was originally planned, designed, and developed under the jurisdiction of Neutrona County in '79 before being annexed by the city in '82. It was, quote, "not designed or built according to current city development standards and policies, especially with regard to maximum block lengths, arterials and collector spacing, secondary points of access, and others." There was a comp plan adopted by council in 2017 that included a connectivity analysis, which unsurprisingly found that fringe areas such as Robertson Road, Trivet Lane area had poor connectivity, and because of this, a new roadway connection was recommended from Trivet to the West Belt Loop, sometimes referred to as the byway. But people will remember in 2020, the Rimrock Ranch donated 646 acres in that area to the BLM, and so that essentially, a great recreation asset, and I'm excited to see what happens with the area, but the unanticipated effect is that it blocks any westward connection that could have occurred in that area. And so I appreciate city planner Craig Collins for passing along that information. Unfortunately, it seems like that's just an area of town that will always experience poor connectivity, so that's a bit unfortunate, but I do appreciate the information in regards to some of the concerns I raised last week. I wanted to commend Crown Construction for their handling of the Second Street project, and thank everyone for their patience. This includes the business owners in the area. There's no good time to do road construction, especially in a dense, you know, area like downtown, but it seems like there's been a lot of compromise. Everyone's working together to get it done as quickly and conveniently as possible. I was there over the weekend and saw a ton of foot traffics, so I hope that means that people have come out in support to go out of their way to patronize these businesses during a time that's typically slow for them anyways, but maybe more so with the construction in the area. But I've just been really impressed with Crown Construction, so I wanted to commend them. And then lastly, just wanted to remind people, if you didn't see, Wyoming Medical Center, as of this afternoon, had 196 people admitted, 64 for COVID, and that's more than 30% of all the patients in the hospital. This is per the Casper Star Tribune. And twice in the last week, there were zero ICU beds, which is kind of a scary thought. You know, if there was a bus accident or something, and a lot of people needed beds, we don't have the beds available, and I don't believe, I don't know if there was rationing of care at the medical center, but the county health officer, Dr. Dowell, did say that this is the largest patient total he's seen since he moved here in the early 90s. And so, again, just reminding people, do what you can. If you're sick, if you've got the sniffles, please don't go out and mingle with me or anybody else. Stay home if you're feeling sick, wear a mask in public, especially when you're around lots of people, and, you know, if you're on the fence about vaccination, maybe just consider it further and speak to your trusted medical provider. That's all I have, thanks.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Councilman Gamros' accolades about the construction downtown. I think that was, had some people really nervous, but I would note that the closures have been intermittent, so don't let it scare you away. There's still lots of, at least all weekend long, the road was open and able to be passed easily. There was parking available as well, so, you know, I think, yes, continue to expect some interruptions down there, but I think they're being kept to a minimum. Wanted to draw people's attention to the Visit Casper Business Challenge. They have opted to use some CARES Act funding to basically create a tourist-focused version of the startup challenge. They've partnered with Impact 307 on that, and they just announced that there were five finalists. So if you haven't been following that, they will be distributing some of the funding to five tourist-related initiatives to try to encourage tourism recovery here over the next while here in Casper, something really excited to see. Thought that was a creative way to hopefully spur some business growth, or even some new businesses in this case as well. There's a mix of both existing and new businesses that are up for some of this funding. So finalists have been announced, so if you haven't already followed that, I think there was a few news articles about what those proposals are, and I think that really shortly, maybe in the next week or so, they'll be distributing funds to them with the expectation that a lot of these plans will start to go into place immediately. So hopefully that means we'll see some new opportunities that will benefit tourism here in the Casper area. And that's all I have.
Councilwoman Quest.
I think I'll just echo Councilwoman Gamros' comments about the state of health in our community, and just encourage everybody to take all the precautions you already mentioned. Vaccines are safe and they're effective, but we can also take care of each other by wearing our masks and remembering that it takes the time, there's a lag between when you get your vaccine and when you're fully covered. So just keeping all the details in mind and keeping our friends and families and neighbors safe, so that's it.
Councilman Cathy.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman, no.
Couple things. First off, for about a little over a month, I've been working on, I've met with the chief, I've met with the city manager, and I've been concerned about the mental health of our first responders. And of course, Lieutenant Dundas, his passing really brought this forward. I'd already been working on it, but I found a company out of Fort Collins that does trauma counseling, and they also do classes so that people that are first responders understand and learn the effects of what they go through on a daily basis, how it has on their mental health. And this particular company, I found, among many, I'm very impressed with because every one of their counselors are former first responders. And so I'm trying to work on a collaborative effort right now with the hospital, the sheriff's office, and our police department, as far as trying to bring some type of trauma counseling availability to our people. What that looks like fiscally, I don't know yet. I was originally pushing to try to find literally a trauma counselor that we could hire as part of our city staff to look after our firemen, our policemen, and our city workers. But what I've found through in-depth researches is that that doesn't work. A lot of people are unwilling to come forward and talk to a counselor that's on staff because of any stigmas or anything that may come with that, so it's almost going to have to come from an outside source, which I know we utilize now, but I think we should probably take a better in-depth look at the amount of money we're spending currently on mental health for our first responders and our city staff, and see if it wouldn't behoove us to maybe look at a better program that's more suited to dealing with our folks and the trauma they're dealing with. So I'm in the middle of that now, I'll have more for you, Carter, eventually. And then that brings me to another, this one's going to be off the wall a little bit, and I don't know if, what type of resistance this may or may not be met with, but I actually had a constituent reach out to me, and he said, you know, we really ought to be proactive and maybe rename Center Street to Martin Luther King Boulevard, or something like that. And the more I thought about it, the human being who epitomized Casper, who everybody dearly loved, and even the criminals that he had put in jail came and paid their respects to him, and I don't know what it would take, but I literally think we should look at renaming Center Street Danny Dundas Way as a tribute to that man, what he did for our city, what he meant to all of our people, not just our first responders, but all the way down to the last criminal. I don't know where we go from here, how we do that, if we have an interest in doing that, but I really like the idea. So I don't know where we go with it from here, but it was a thought I had and wanted to share. That's all I have, thank you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco. Thank you, Mayor. Just one topic. Had an opportunity to speak to a very tough crowd the other day, Park Elementary Kindergarteners. There were 50 of them. Anyway, they invited me to kick off their unit for heroes, and had an opportunity to talk a little bit about police officers, first responders, and firefighters, and the work that they do, and they were riveted by city council as I talked to them about ordinances and all that stuff. That didn't really happen, Carter. They weren't really riveted. They were more interested, they were more interested in my work and talking with firefighters and police officers. And so why I bring that up, I was honored to talk to the kindergarteners, and while they're very sweet and innocent, they always give me hope for the future, but primarily just the opportunity to talk about the police officers and firefighters and the first responders that deal with the dangers and everything else, and that they're human and they take those home at night with their loved ones. And so it was great doing that. It was fun to hang out with them and talk with them, and let them know how wonderful our police officers and firefighters are and our first responders. So it was a pleasure to do that.
The only thing I would add, I know there's a few council members up here that, obviously, the events we've recently gone through here was one of our own, and there's a few council members up here that have expressed interest in wanting to do more, but I would ask that instead of trying to throw things at it, reinvent the wheel, or whatever it might be, I'd really like to know what each department's doing, what the police department's doing, what the fire department's doing when it comes to traumatic incidents that happen. Because in my mind, I've been thinking about it for the last week, and I think for us to try and throw things at it, counselors, whatever it might be, you may have something in place right now in both those departments that we don't know about, that we're not aware of, and so I would rather know what it is and what we can do to better enhance that, or supplement what's going on now to make it better. So I'll just kind of leave it at that, but I would really like to know what's being done and what we can do to help that, and not try and guess on this side what we can do to make things better. Let's know what's out there and being used, so.
That's all I have for tonight. However, we do have a special council meeting, so I will now call the October 12th, 2021 special council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilmember Pollock. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding land acquisition and litigation, therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of the executive session, to reconvene the special meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this special meeting. And Mr. City Manager, I believe we also have personnel, correct?
Mr. Mayor, we initially thought personnel would be necessary tonight, but we do not have that. Litigation and land is where we need to be for...
Okay. Moved by Councilman, now second by Councilman Gamros. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of council present. So please cast your vote, and I didn't realize we had that up, so if we could please cast our vote. And please record the vote. Our motion passes. A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into an executive session.